Town of Lee Right to Know Law Meeting Checklist as Chairman of the Select Board. Okay.
You did promote it.
Okay, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020 to 04, this board is meeting electronically utilizing Zoom platform. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access this meeting using Zoom and instructions are provided on the Town of Lee website at leenewhamshire.org. If anybody has a problem with access, please call 603-659-5414. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance when each member states their presence. Also, please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. That's better. Okay.
All right.
Now where's everybody?
Tom, do you have a taker?
Is Rebecca here?
But she has her hands full.
Rebecca is here, as well as a small child.
See if she's able. I don't know if she recorded it before and did it or what, but if she's able, that would be awesome.
Anybody else want to do it?
No.
No.
Been there, done that.
All right.
Rebecca was setting virtual. Okay, let's.
So Julie, is that your forest shot?
So Julie is not involved. So Carrie Brown?
Yes, I'm here and I'm alone.
Cord Blumpquist?
I'm here and I'm alone.
Pat Barber?
I'm here and I'm alone.
Scott Bugbee?
I'm here and I'm alone.
Stacy Waits?
Here and I'm alone.
Rebecca Hawthorne. Rebecca Hawthorne is there and.
I'm here.
And with?
With Madeline.
Madeline. Tom Murdock here and alone. All right. We are good to go, I guess. So Scott, we're going to start by just going through the list like we did before. Can you do like you always do and?
All right. Everybody should have the, I sent out another version. The only difference is that it has the Rec Commission information. The first one didn't that I sent out. So hopefully everybody got the latest one.
I think I got the new one, yeah.
Okay.
Can I just ask, like, what's the, what's the objective for this evening? What are we trying to achieve here?
Scott? I'll let you answer.
Usually what we do, Stacy, is during this particular meeting, we go through all the presentations that we've had so far and see if we can come to make any recommendations for those. These are not final recommendations. This is just going through the first ones that we've already had. So that's the agenda that I have tonight. I don't know if Tom has anything else he wants to cover, but he can cover that.
No, that's it.
So, but the goal of the select board was to have level budgeting and we have a 2020 budget of 4.1 million and a 2021 budget of 4.2.
Uh, yes. And so far, the primary requests are at 4.5.
Okay, so we've gone up. So it's, it's not level. It's a quarter million dollars more.
Yep.
And it's more than the year-to-year growth from the previous two years.
Yes, yes, it is.
So should our goal be to cut $250,000 out of this or 200, I guess it's more like 225?
That's up to the group.
But that's, that was the select board's goal.
Yeah. Okay, that's, that's the goal they gave to the department heads. As you know, we're advisory. We can do whatever we want. We can advise more or less the same, whatever it is that we feel is most prudent. So.
Okay, let's start at zero and work our way up.
Oh, okay. But usually what we do is we go through and I've highlighted them on my sheet. We'll just go through the different departments. And if anybody has anything that they want to say about anything in terms of changing something, or if you want to just accept what was presented. But the important thing is this is not the last time we'll do this. So if you have, you know, if we say, okay, that's, that's good for that particular department, we can always come back later and say, okay, no, we want to change that. We want to tweak it. Okay?
Okay.
All right. The first one is elections and registration. It's down from last year because there's less elections for them to cover. So last year was $13,090. This year they're asking for 86.32.
Why is it so high for fiscal year '21? I thought there was only like one or two elections for '21 also, as opposed to the four we had this year.
Now, you had a primary in there as well. You had the primary in September. You had the general election.
Yep.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. And that's all covered under fiscal year '21, right?
And 20, yeah.
Okay, got it.
That's, that's what we're in right at the moment.
Yeah, okay.
So you'll also have the deliberative session, then you'll also have the March vote.
Okay.
So in '22, you'll have, you'll have, you won't have a primary, you won't have a presidential, you'll have a deliberative session, and then you'll have the March vote. So it's less.
Yep.
Is everybody okay with what they requested?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
And there's a problem here that does department head request or department requested budget. And I'm just going to move those numbers over to the ABC request, R E C budget. There's not enough space to put in everything. So that's how we as a group keep track. When this is done and we're finalized everything, this is in, well, this is Crystal Reports, but there's a database behind it and I'll take that database and just give it to Joanne and she will upload it into the accounting system. So there's no data entry or anything like that. It's quite, quite quick and easy. We've done that for the last two years. So it speeds up the process.
Okay.
Next one is Town Court Tax Collector. Last year, she requested $97,189 and this year's requesting 80, no, excuse me, 98, 907 increase of about $1,700.
What's this overtime, Light Adam? Does anybody know what that's associated with?
Well, Liz is the only one in that department that gets overtime. So it has to be, so Linda's salaried, so it's for Liz.
It's only $300.
Yep.
Okay.
You okay with that one?
Yes, Scott, I can't find, I can't find the same piece of paper that you said you sent out. When did you send that out?
Oh, I sent it out only to the ABC members because this is an ABC meeting.
Ah, well, that explains it. Okay.
I could send it to you too. All it is, is it, it's kind of what Julie, like Julie says that she sends out, but this one allows us to make changes and tweaks.
Okay, all right, no problem. Just go on with your meeting.
Okay. Next one is on page four, the cemetery. They asked for $7,000 last year and they've asking for another $7,000 this year. We good with that one?
Yeah.
Yep.
The next one is the police department, same page. Current budget is $761,167. This year they're asking for 799,397. And remember, that's the, he's requesting another patrol officer. And he's also reducing overtime because of that. He's also got, which he started this year, is the Attorney for Doing Prosecutions. So that the lieutenant can, he doesn't, no longer has to do that particular job.
So that's really adding like a person and some fraction of a person. It's taking, it's taking work off of the lieutenant.
Well.
So that person's hours should be back to police work.
Lieutenant is replaced by the attorney, really. So he's going to get more of that attorney, of the lieutenant's time. But he's asking, adding a whole new full person, a full-time person.
Yeah, but I'm saying that there's, there's more police hours on the beat or whatever you want to say, because the lieutenant's no longer doing like paralegal work.
That's true.
Well, don't forget that.
He was doing that.
And it was a lot of that work at home outside of his normal 40 hours.
Right.
That's not.
That was extra.
Okay, so he was getting compensated for that. That wasn't digging into his normal 40-hour work week?
That was not what I understood.
Okay.
The other thing to remember is that's just the salary portion in here. Julie, when she presents the other budgets that are under the selectmen's, the cost of benefits and stuff will be in that particular budget.
Scott, it might be helpful for Stacy if you go over again about Tom's long-term plan of where he wants to be with the department. Because this is kind of an annual discussion about adding an officer.
Yeah.
Yeah, the chief's been coming to us for, I don't know, how many years?
Every year he's been there.
At least.
Yeah. I don't know if it's that many, but he's, and this particular year is, is, is extra hard because his number of calls are up. The other thing that's up, he's up, he has more domestic things that he has to deal with and more felonies. Felony takes more time than a regular misdemeanor or, you know, a traffic stop. So he's saying that he needs more assistance doing those particular things to cover those things that are happening in town, so.
He's also had been down an officer through the whole COVID thing, right? Because he's got somebody that's in the guard.
Yeah, he's got somebody in the guard, somebody that's been out for two weeks for COVID-19.
But the guy that's in the guard's been gone for months.
Yep, he, he was back and now he's gone again, so.
So does he need another person or does he need to just get back up to where he was?
It's a good question, Cor.
Actually, every year he's been telling us that the, the actual magic number that they would like to be able to complete the schedule and not have officers be alone on, at certain time periods and to meet the, you know, demands and the population size and everything else. He's had number of reasons why he needs to be up to where he needs to be. And that magic number was 11 officers. And Brian Burke, who obviously was chief for many, many years, agreed with that number and said, this is where, you know, a police department needs to be to be able to, to function, you know, adequately. So, and this has been for the past four years that I've been involved and everybody who's been here with us, we've dealt with this every single year and he's documented and he's given us all the reasons why we need to try and give him at least another officer to get him up to nine. I think he'll, you know, be at, not even at 11. And last year we recommended it and then it was part of the budget. The fire department hadn't requested someone, but really did need someone too. And it was decided that the, you know, it was more important to give it to the fire department than the police department at that point last year. So now Tom is back asking again to please try and get up to where he needs to be to, to, to make it all work. And not have individual officers being alone on shifts. I mean, all the reasons, all the reasons that he said for every year. So that's sort of a recap of things.
Yeah, Julie sent out, if you look at the budget documents, number one that Julie sent out, it includes the police department presentation, which he did not go through this year, which is interesting because he's always kind of gone through and.
Yeah, very briefly.
Yeah.
And I think that that gives a much fuller picture as to why he's once again are still asking for another person. And he shows you all the statistics and all the recommendations based on our population from all the different places. Why, why he'd like to have another officer? I think that, I feel like that would be an important thing to make sure we've all read, because I think it really, I feel like he skimmed through a lot of it this year and I don't know if it was just defeat or what.
What document is that?
If you look at the email Julie sent, the title of the email is Budget Documents Number One Fiscal Year '22. And then it's one of the documents attached. It's the PD-FY22 Budget Presentation.
Okay.
We have that.
I will see if I can find it.
People, the man needs, the man needs some more, some more officers to do what he needs to do. You know, if you, if you go back five years, if you go back five years, you go back 10 years, look at the traffic on 125, look at the number of felonies that happened from year to year, look at the kind of drug activity they had and then compare it to where we are today. The man has got to have some more resources in order, in order to deal with it. That's a fact. And I mean, we just saw it, what, two months ago, eight weeks ago in the middle of our town, that market basket. I, I don't think, I don't think anybody would have imagined that three years from now. But there was this guy sitting in the bed of a truck, shooting off rounds, and we ended up with almost every police department plus the state troopers, plus, plus dogs, everything else, trying to get it under control. And our police department, our shorthanded police department did a great job. And, and we need to support that because it's not going to get better. They're not going to go away. The number of drug busts and what they're finding when they, when they bust these people, the amount of fentanyl, the stolen product inside the cars that are arms, you know, we, we need to understand, we got to be ready to deal with that. We also have, on top of having great people working for us in that department, the fact is several of them, several, whatever, I'll just say even a couple of them are working single-person cars at night. And let me tell you what, that's difficult duty. That is difficult duty, especially in a town that has zero streetlights and everything else. So consider that, consider what a great job they're doing for us and it takes resources to keep it up.
Well, having two members of the select board here, maybe you guys can give us some insight as to why the ABC keeps recommending it, but they don't get that place officer? Because it's, it's not really us you have to commend, it's yourselves, almost.
Yeah, the other, and I agree with everything Mr. Brown said. And Mr. Brown and I agree on many things and some things we don't. One of the things that is holding me back in this particular budget, there's two particular positions that are looking to, one, adding a police person and two, getting the benefits to one of the library people. Salary is not what kills us. Usually it's the benefit cost. And my issue with this whole adding new people is we're waiting, at least I am waiting for the other shoe to drop in terms of people paying their taxes. We anticipated possibly when the bills went out for the July bill, people weren't going to be able to pay. And they actually did. They paid more quickly than they did previous year. So now all the towns are waiting to see what happens with the December bill. Eventually this is going to hit people because they're not working. They're not getting the $600 unemployment anymore. So my issue is, yeah, we can add these people, but I don't want to go in six months and find out and say, no, so we have budget shortfall, we don't have enough money coming in. We're going to have to let people go. Traditionally, Lee doesn't do that. Those are my concerns.
I'm sorry, Scott, but those, those weren't your concerns last year and we didn't get it approved last year.
Right.
Your concerns the year before and we didn't get it approved then.
That's my concerns this year. How about that?
Okay, that's fine. At the same time, let's keep in mind that, you know, the future, the future is now. It changes every week.
Oh, yes. And.
I think we need to go forward based on what we think we need.
If you need help, call the library.
Yeah, that's, that's the other thing. Public safety is number one. All right. So the fire department and the police department need to be where they need to have, you know, the resources to be able to function appropriately. And believe it or not, it does affect all of our taxes and so forth, because response time and everything else is calculated into insurance and, and so forth. So that being, that aside, my personal belief, and I think also a number of people on this committee, is that public safety is number one in our town. We have to help them. We have to get them the resources that they need. We did help Scott the last couple of years get the fire department. We need to help Tom this year.
I tend to agree that public, you know, public service is more important than, say, like the library. And I think that if the mandate from the selectmen was that we need to have a net zero budget, then something else needs to be cut, you know, and that's just kind of the reality of it. And we need to figure out where we can cut that additional expense to accommodate this person that the police chief wants.
And that's, that's Stacy, that's a good point because this is the initial run-through. When we do this again in December, that's something that I look at. I look at the overall budget. Can we afford it? Can we not afford it? And I think by the time you have a good idea in terms of if people are paying their December bills, because if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. So.
Yeah.
The other thing which I'll share with you, which we had a meeting last night, and this is kind of tangential, so this is more of a piece of information that you guys don't have. One of the things we found out last Friday, the Fairpoint Communications Court case that all the towns in New Hampshire are involved with, three specific towns, Hanover, Belmont and Durham, they took Fairpoint to court and they lost. So Julie's trying to get from my lawyer approximately how much that's going to cost us. The number's been thrown around to Lee is about $400,000. So that's a significant part of chunk of change that we would have to come up with. So that's another concern sitting in the back of my mind, you know, that particular liability. It might be less and I don't, we don't think it's going to be more, but that's something that's sitting out there as well, so. So, so with all these things, those are all great reasons down the road that maybe it's not going to happen. But what we decide now is, do we need and would we, under the circumstances, maybe they'll change, but do we give Tom the officer that he needs and recommend it to the select board that he gets the officer that he needs? The select board, like they always do, in the months to come, will decide whether it's going to be able to work in the budget or not.
Yep.
And it'll be based on all those things you just talked about. But that will be a good reason for the select board to say, we wanted to do this, but we just can't do it this year. The taxes didn't come in. We have a $400,000 bill. We, we just can't do it this year. We'll plan on trying to accomplish it next year. But what we're doing is recommending that Tom get his extra guy.
Yeah. And I agree with everything that you said, Tom, because as a group, I'm not trying, I was asked a question, I answered it. I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other. This committee is independent. Do what you think you need to do. So if you guys want to do that, that's perfectly defined. And I agree with what you said, Tom, so.
And what you'll, yeah, you guys will do it. Evaluate it when the time comes.
Yeah, that's.
If the money's not there, then that's a reason why you won't be able to do it.
Yep. So anything else in the police budget or anything else we want to discuss?
Can I just ask, what's the, what's the new, sorry, the new equipment, the $46,000? Did, did the chief talk about that when he came in?
Is that the cruiser?
That's the cruiser.
He gets a new cruiser every year.
Yeah.
But that's in the CIP, right?
No, we took it out of the CIP and we put it in his operating budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
So he gets a new cruiser every year?
Yeah.
They roll over. So the one, one usually goes out and the other one, and a new one comes in. The oldest one with the most mileage.
Yep.
And then they sell that or trade it or whatever.
Yeah, they get.
How many do they operate at any one time?
I think he has five, I think, at the moment.
But there's only two officers on duty?
Not every day, not all the time. I mean, some during the day, there's more, but.
Yeah, the chief has one for his use and then they have the, I think there's five. Carrie, do you know off the top of your head?
I think, I think your number's right. The chief has one and then I think there's four others. There's four others that are patrol cars. And, and the fact is, by the time you equip them, unless you can move all the equipment over from the, if you would, the one that's being retired, given the fact that there's a lot of technology coming that they're having to implement in these patrol cars. You know, it's, it's, they're, they're pricey for sure.
I mean, to me, that seems like an easy cut to make. I mean, I don't get a new car every year.
Yeah, but you don't patrol 24 hours a day with five different people in yours.
That's true, but I feel like that's, you know, if we need to, if we need to cut down on an expense, then that to me seems like it may be a reasonable expense to cut and just make do.
Especially during the year when we're facing a national pandemic and we might need to put off one expense. It's not as though we're saying you don't get a police, you don't get a cruiser ever again.
Right.
Maybe you don't get a cruiser in 2020 because the country is in a crisis.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe they can do things to, if things need to be done for repair or whatever, then.
The question is, the question is how much mileage is on the other four or five patrol cars and what's in the CIP?
Right.
We have a capital, we have a capital plan that anticipates all this, or it's supposed to, and is funded, so, you know.
Yeah, so why was that taken out, actually?
Because one year there was a, one year it was on a Warren article and it got voted down. And he ended up with the newest vehicle he had, had like 200,000 miles on it. Threw the whole rotation out of the cars. So we, we put it in the budget essentially so that wouldn't happen again.
So is there any cruisers in the CIP though, or is it just?
No.
No, you're right. They moved it over to the operating budget, what, two years ago.
Can I, can I suggest to the group that we request that, I don't know if it's Julie or the chief, give us a listing of the vehicles and the amount of mileage in the year that they were purchased?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea.
And then we can have the conversation. That's, because the other thing, just in terms of Stacy, what you said, if you want to add an officer in the police department, the cuts don't necessarily have to come from the same department. They can come from someplace else.
Yeah.
So it might be that you choose to keep the cruiser and then cut something else or a combination of the things. They don't have to come from the same exact budget, so.
But if they could, and she's right, you know, that would be convenient and maybe they don't need another.
Yeah.
Cruiser. Maybe we can get by with a cruiser for another year, two years and then do it.
Has Tom, has Tom Bransfield addressed the ABC?
Yes.
Yeah.
Have he?
Yep. I'll put in the request to the chief and I'll copy Julie. I don't know which one can give us, maybe it's a combination of the two, that information. Okay?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Any other issues with the police budget? I'll move all of the numbers over except for the cruiser, the new equipment line. Is that what I'm hearing?
Does everybody agree or?
Yes.
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 Okay. So everything except new equipment? Right. So everything except new equipment. Okay. Next, highway department. Um, he did exactly what we told him to do. Last year's or this current year's, $545,050 and that's the same amount these requesting. We tweaked some things and moved a few things around.
Right.
But it's basically the same. Any issue with any of that? Any questions?
He seems to do a pretty good job of doing, managing all that.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right. I'll move all it over. Transfer station. Transfer station, last year's budget was 185,062. This year's 184,237. So he went down 800 bucks or so. Anything? His budget, how can you complain about that?
Yeah, what can you say?
We should, we should put that $800 into his salary as a thank you.
Oh. Put it over in the police budget.
Yeah.
Put it in the police budget.
Yes. All right. Solid waste, anything? The big hit in here is the amount to, um, tipping fee for MSW, uh, we're in a contract and it goes up, I think this year it went, or in January it goes from 64 to 65 and a half, I think, or something like that. It's a dollar 50. Um, the other thing, the cost for hauling is going up. So those are the two things that are the, the changers. I don't think anything else changed.
No, I think, I think the only, the only issue Scott is that as costs go up for, for all these tipping fees and hauling, the price per ton we're getting for a lot of the race, uh, waste is, uh, like plastic and so on is going down. So, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's going to be, I think, a tough, a tough fight through the summer until rates change or something, something occurs.
Yep. Right.
So that, it keeps getting, the cost keeps going up because what we're getting keeps going down and the cost of getting rid of other stuff keeps going up.
Yeah, they, they meet, they meet once every, uh, two weeks or three weeks with the National Recovery Recycling Association, discuss the latest prices and where they're going, et cetera, et cetera. I sat in the last one. And, uh, you know, the prices right now, the pricing for a lot of the solid waste is going, is going down. And we'll just have to wait to see. I mean, really the whole thing looks like to me, you know, comes down to China just not buying American solid waste, uh, running the price down.
Yeah, the recyclables, all the recyclable stuff. Anything?
Okay.
Move it over? Okay. All right. Next one is the service, excuse me, health service agencies. Um, last year there was a total of 22,758, this year 19,235. There's two entities that are asking for any money, Lamprey Healthcare and Homemakers. They didn't ask for anything this year. The rest of them, I believe, well, I take it back, Goodman Health's request went down. Um, and also the one, the new one, Oyster River Woman Aid, Women Aid, excuse me, Woman Aid. That's a new request? Any of these you want to talk about?
That's a new request.
Yep.
And it's $2,000.
Yeah. There was information about the services they provide.
Yeah. I remember a little bit of it. I mean, it, uh, they're all great things, but
Yeah.
in, in these times are we, you know, it's a brand new one. Do we want to think about giving them a little lesson?
I just, I have a little experience with the Portsmouth branch of Women Aid.
Okay.
Really interesting organization. They provide their maximum grant to, to an applicant, presumably a woman, would be $500. And it's, they've, when you read some of the stories of things that they've done, they're all volunteer. They have no staff. They get together. Essentially in Portsmouth, it ends up being a group of mostly younger women who get together a couple of times a year and, and bring their checkbooks and have a meeting and drink wine and, and they, they've started doing a lot more fundraising, but like they might find a, a woman who needs a refrigerator purchased or repaired, or a car repaired to get to work. And they're all, um, they don't, nobody approaches them about, about funding. They get most of their referrals from social service agencies, like the welfare department or department in Portsmouth would, would say so and so needs $500 to get their car repaired so they can go to work. You know, it's, um, I've been very impressed.
A network of referrers, like doctors as well.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Very focused, very, um, as she said, they're, they're probably their biggest shortfall at the moment is $500 doesn't go very far anymore. But you're right, it's a new agency and it's a difficult year. So.
Well, it's a, it's a very, very difficult year. Uh, the, the number of people, only be, I say this only because my wife's very involved in, uh, in these programs. The number of people we have in this area that are homeless with children sleeping in cars is just simply unbelievable. The phone calls that she gets of, of single mothers, uh, especially single mothers with children, husbands deserted them. They don't have any money for fuel. They don't have a way to get to a, to a, a, a job. Um, it's just, it's truly unbelievable. And, uh, I, you know, anything we can do to, to support building a base to help these people. I gotta tell you, it's, it's just, it's really a sad situation right now.
Yeah. And it occurs to me that that would save on Tom's budget if there's fewer people struggling and just on the absolute edge. Uh, that often, right? That often doesn't resolve itself, um, well, as in people struggling can careen into addiction or have other issues. And if we can save people from that, especially some of the, some of the items in here of
It's all connected.
You know, shelters or
Doctors.
child and family services, like yes, get people out of abusive environments. Don't have Tom helping with that, right? Um, we don't want to have the police chief in the middle of things like that if people can be removed from horrible situations and have another way out.
I agree with you. It's not, we don't want them in the middle of it. There's got to be a way of doing it without sacrificing, uh, uh, a police, police officer.
Yeah.
Okay, well, what are you thinking?
Well, we're still down overall compared to last year because we didn't get two requests then, right? We have two items that are zeroed out.
Uh, yeah, the total number is down from last year. Yes. At some point, those two agencies will come back and ask for money, but not this particular fiscal year.
I suggest we move forward with all the requested funds.
Yes.
I mean, I think the, the more money we spend on health services, the less we're going to have to spend on direct welfare assistance.
Okay, we all good with that?
Yep.
And these requests really are largely based on the services they provided to Lee.
That's what I was wondering, yeah. Even Woman Aid, like
I don't know about Woman Aid.
I don't know if they were helping in the air. That was the only question that I was wondering, you know. I know all the others. The only reason I was asking was Women Aid is new and they're asking for $2,000. And some of the others that we support and we know that are contributing to the town of Lee are, aren't even asking that much. And so to give them the $2,000 right away, just, you know, I might, and I'm not
I don't remember from that presentation.
People. I'm just saying, maybe we give them, you know, a thousand dollars or $1,500. And then when they come back next year and they are doing good things and we know they're, they're helping Lee, I mean, obviously they're doing good things, but, um, then we give them more.
So they're
From there, did they give anybody?
They did. Yeah, they did. So their filing says that they, um, served six Lee residents in 2019.
They did. Okay, okay.
So we owe them three grand.
So that's three, so that's three grand, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we're good.
I mean, it's up to $500. They could have given somebody, uh, 40 bucks for a new pair of the Keds or something.
Oh, right.
You know, um, we don't know what the requests were, but
Right.
It's good knowing that they are reaching out to the community despite us having not contributed as a town previously.
All right.
I mean, never yet. This is a group, they've never asked us for money because they've done so much fundraising. I know that they usually do two or three big fundraisers a year.
They do.
Canceled last year or last year. So, you know, they are an organization unlike some organizations that actually work really hard to support themselves and it's just, fundraisers are really screwed right now.
Okay.
I'll move them all over.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Parks and Rec. Oh, we're going to have the yearly Oyster River Youth Association discussion, everybody.
Oh.
So, um,
We know, we know what Larry thinks.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
How to do. The thing we have to be careful of, uh, having a conversation with Karen Rossi as well. Any of the things that Larry comes to present to us haven't been voted on by their committee. So we just have to be careful of that.
Yes.
Um, they're meeting tonight because the committee, as far as, uh, Karen was telling me, never voted to propose the $10,000 for the trust fund. And I said, please clarify that tonight. They're meeting exactly when we're meeting. So just, just be aware of that. So she's going to let us know if they vote for, uh, requesting the 10,000 for the Capital Reserve Fund for, uh, Rec Commission. So just be aware of that.
Scott, did I see, did I see somewhere in some minutes that, uh, you, you, the Board of Selectmen voted to get rid of the tennis court?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that, we've had that discussion for a number of years. So that's actually going to happen now.
Yeah, it's in such poor shape. It's kind of a liability. So we thought we kind of did it months ago, but I guess we didn't make ourselves clear, I guess. But, uh, too many, I think it was two meetings ago. We instructed the, um, Public Works Manager to remove it and also to fix the, um, there's electricity there to take care of that, to get that out of there. That's also going to save us like $300 a year in terms of that meter. So we're not going to need the meter.
Okay.
Saves us a little bit, but we also instructed the, uh, Rec Commission to look and find out how much it costs to put a tennis court at Little River Park. According to the highway, uh, Public Works Manager, his investigations have come up with, it's about $25,000. So we asked the Rec Commission to take that on and to see. And I think in terms of their trust fund, they got just about that much in there. So hopefully we find out how much that is. And if we need a little bit more to put it in, maybe we put that in this year and just have them put it in at Little River Park.
That's actually a lot less than they said originally. They said like $40,000.
Yeah, that was 40 was the number that's been knocked around for years.
Right.
So
Is the large flat area over there not able to be used as a tennis court now? What is a tennis court other than a flat bit of ground?
Overall.
No, it's
It's pickleball now.
It's pickleball, yes.
The ball needs to bounce right. No. And the lines and there's a lot that goes into a tennis court.
I thought when we built the pickleball though, it was going to be able to be used as both.
That's what I thought. They didn't do that and it's a different size.
Yeah.
Well, the select board asked the Rec Commission to look into it. So they're, they're, they're going to look into it and get back to us. So.
Okay.
It'll check out those particular things. So.
Fair enough. I guess that's not in our budget now anyway.
Scott, have you gotten any more information on ORYA since we had that presentation from them in terms of what the other towns are doing or any updates?
Uh, Madberry is funding them. Uh, Durham is not.
Not at all.
Not anything?
Uh, as far as I've heard, no. He's cut them out of the budget. The last time I get the Durham updates every Friday, I believe the last one is, uh, not the last one he did, but previous ones, he, it's not in the budget at all.
So do you know if Durham is like, so then all the rates for the people that are participating in Durham go up?
Yeah.
Is Durham doing anything to help them individually or something or?
Don't know about that. I don't know.
I'm wondering what other plan they have to help or if they just let, like they must have scholarships if someone can't afford.
Oyster River Youth does, yes. Yes.
To do that.
The other thing is, as we've known for the last few years, Durham has been trying to promote their own rec department. But as, as I remember the, um, in terms of Oyster River Youth was out and also to reduce the hours of their rec director as well. So they're feeling the budget crunch as well. So. And as we all know, Oyster River Youth is no longer in Durham. They're in Madberry.
Right.
So.
It's a sad thing. I grew up with them and went through all that, coached for them, ran programs for them, but you know, things are changing, I guess.
So last year we gave them 15,000. This year they're asking for 31,242. What do we want to do?
I wouldn't give them more than 15.
No.
I wouldn't either.
Just keep it. Or, or you're right, it's
Just cheap it?
Or reduce, or reduce.
Well.
I mean, in this year, like we said, you know, it's a difficult time. So is that something that we would do, would consider reducing? I would. Um, because the families are going to pay for it. And then if, if they can't pay for it, then I think that maybe we should have something that they apply so they can get help. Cause I would hate to not have a kid be able to, you know, not participate.
But they asked for 30,000 about last year. So it's
They asked for four.
They asked for like 40 something, right?
They're not going to, families aren't going to see a huge increase because we're not changing what we did last year. So if they were still in sports this year, it should
So they wouldn't even see it, right?
I don't think so.
Unless their cost went up.
Well, the only thing I can think of is if Durham is not giving them any money, then they might try to spread the, the deficit out to, you know, participants regardless of the town.
Well, their claim is that that's not what they do. They, so when you sign up for ORYA Sports, they ask you what town you live in.
Yep.
Your place is based on that town. So they claim
Yes.
Durham residents will just have to pay more because Durham's not paying anything.
And what we give offsets a little bit what they would have charged.
Yep.
Think of it as a subsidy, a subsidy for the people that come from Lee of how much ever we give them. So.
Higher childhood doing fundraisers. I don't know, I don't know about these subsidy things. We just sold, we sold hot dogs with the Boy Scouts. I went to Philmont in Florida on the back of hot dog sales. I worked my tail off every summer slinging dogs, you know, so I
And some, some towns have businesses that support them and ORYA has been Durham, Lee and Madbury for all these years and they've always gotten contributions from.
But for the last two, for the last two years, it's been $15,000 has gone and we haven't heard some hue and cry of kids not being able to participate.
Right.
Then it seems to me that you just keep it level and you wait until there's some sort of problem. I mean, if there isn't a problem, why are we even
Do kids? I don't know because I'm, I'm not involved with that, but do, does Larry or does anybody on the rec or does the selectman ever hear of a kid that can't afford to participate in rec sports? Um, because of the
Oh.
No.
The youth, Oyster River Youth Association doesn't allow kids that can't afford it not be able to participate. They get the scholarship to go.
Okay.
I have not heard
That's all I care about.
So Scott, what, what did they, how much did they receive last year, Scott?
15,000.
And how much, how much the year before that?
15,000.
Okay. So it looks to me like we're on a track for 16,000.
15,000.
Okay, 15,000.
Scott, are they still doing the, the care of the fields and the scheduling and stuff?
No, that's, that's, the Public Works Manager is doing that now.
He's doing the care of the fields. Is, is ORYA doing the scheduling?
Yes, yes.
Okay. How's that, how's that working?
Um, I don't know. I don't hear any complaints, but
Then it must be working. Okay.
Yep.
How's it, how is it having, um, Steve do the fields?
Uh, Steve is much happier. So.
Are we much happier?
Uh, Steve will let me know or let us know if he's not happy, but he's the kind of one that's kind of requested this.
Okay.
Okay. It's going fine. It's going fine with, uh, with, uh, the, the town, uh, Parks and Rec and et cetera, taking care of the fields. And, uh, no, it's working out so far. It's working out quite well.
Okay. So I'll change that to 15,000. How about the rest of the programs, the rec events? Um, he's requesting a little bit less money. Town Fair is requesting a little bit less money. Supplies are up just a little bit and electricity is at 1,500 to pay for the Little River Park power down there. So are we okay with all those?
Well, what we don't, for some of that, we don't even know what's going to happen next year as far as activities, do we? So
We don't.
Yeah. The terms of the recreational events, they're talking about a Halloween thing. Um, Model Rocket Day again, the fishing derby, the Easter egg hunt, um, movies in the park again. Seems like there was something else besides that. There was like five or six events they're planning.
Uh, what he's saying is if that all happens, but I guess we plan as if it is going to happen and then
Yeah. If he doesn't use it, he doesn't use it.
Well, you know, there was a question about can we do the fishing derby? Can we do the, can we do the fair? Uh, who knows what, uh, what all of this COVID
Yep.
Uh, rules and regulations are going to do to that. So
Yep.
So plan as if we are.
And in terms of, I don't know if you guys get it, but there's an update that comes about all the COVID cases. Lee is still in the one to four range.
Yep.
So just cross your fingers that people in Lee are doing well compared to some other towns. So hopefully we can keep it up. So.
And I think that next summer, that, you know, people are going to be more well versed in what it's like to live with the pandemic. And so hopefully we can, you know, have some of these programs go on and maybe just, um, you know, alter the procedures or limit entrances or, you know,
Take the precautions.
Yeah, exactly. As opposed to just canceling outright.
Yep. All right. So I'll move all those over except for Oyster River Youth. I'll reduce it to 15,000.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah. The last one I have that has been presented is the library. And the big change in that is they're getting rid of the library tech two and adding a full-time or is it full-time youth services librarian? And then giving that particular position benefits. So that's the big increase in the library budget.
Scott, is, Scott, is that just a change in job title? Uh, it just doesn't sound, you know, whether they're a library tech two, because I know they've had a person there that was, if you would, managing the children and so on, and appeared to be going very, very well. Is it just a title change or what's, what's?
They're increasing that particular person's hours and giving them benefits. And then they're getting rid of the tech two position.
The benefits are not presented here. So this increase, this budget is
Well, it kind of are. They're under ancillary PR expenses.
Okay.
They're the, so it went from 42,000 to 78. So a difference of 36,000 about.
Okay.
Why are the benefits for this one in that line item versus in the selectmen's line item like all the others?
Good question, Stacy.
Yeah, the library is separate.
The library is separate. They're autonomous to the town. Uh, no matter what, let's say the selectmen say this is how this is going to be, this library doesn't have to do it. They are in charge of the library. The RSA say that they're executives of that particular function. So we separate the cost out for that. So you know how much it costs, how much it costs for the library people to run the library. So yeah, you've, you've kind of stumbled onto that one. That's, that's, we work well. Some other towns do not work well. There's usually fights between the selectmen and the library trustees. We seem to kind of have a more amicable relationship with them. So.
And when you say, we say how it's going to be and they can do whatever they want, do you, do you issue them the money and then they can say, well,
Yep.
We're not hiring a person. We're going to spend $50,000 to build an elaborate, uh, book display.
Yep.
Okay. So, so essentially that, that budget, breaking it out line by line is informative, but it's a no way binding. We give the library a block grant every year essentially.
Yes, essentially.
Yep. Scott is the
But they seem to have used it for what they, in the past.
Yes, yes. So they're not deviating.
They are using it for what, what they've given them, but
Let's say we give them money and the library trustees decide that they're going to put gold plated statues of themselves out in front of the library, you know? Like they can do that, but when their budget comes up next year, the legislative body is going to be saying, eh, no, we're not going to give you any money. So they're, they're, um, they're beholden to the, the voters as well as we are. So they can't go out and do crazy stuff.
So what's this trustees line item? Is that really salary for the trustees?
That's the payment that we make to them on a quarterly basis. So, um, so 25% of that gets given them every quarter. There's a check that's actually a cut to them and that's what they use to buy books and stuff like that.
Okay.
That's not money that goes to them as individuals.
Not an individual. Okay, good. That's what I was wondering.
The rest, the rest of these expenses that you're seeing here, Stacy, are ones that we manage for them. So, you know, they don't have their own health insurance provider. They use ours. So, and in terms of when we cut payroll, we do theirs as well. Uh, it just makes more sense. Other towns, they don't get along and their libraries have the additional expense of running their own payroll, their own books and every stuff, stuff like that.
Got it. Okay.
Town, it just doesn't make any sense. So if you can work with them, great. Saves the town money overall.
Scott, can you refresh my memory on the staffing? They want to make the child librarian, the kids librarian full time and the library assistant too. Is that position, um, filled at the moment? Are they actually going to let somebody go?
The library technician too?
Was zeroed out for this, zeroed out in the request.
Yeah, I, I
Is there anybody in that position that's going to go away?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Oh.
Didn't the
And when is she retiring?
Excuse me?
Sorry.
Pat, that's what I was asking, whether it was just a job title change and then, uh, an increase in salary and benefits, whatever. Or were they actually going to change ahead there somewhere?
They have a youth services librarian right now, but the person is part-time. They want to make that particular person full-time and give them benefits. I do not know the answer to the question about the library tech two. If there's one there currently, I would say there is. I'm not sure if they're, they're leaving or whatever. The other question, somebody's talked about the library director.
Yeah. She's leaving, isn't she?
Next year, I believe, maybe June, May. The, the date keeps getting changed because her husband has, um, medical issues and they're kind of taking longer than she anticipated. So that's why it keeps getting changed. Uh, supposedly he's done now. So they're looking at maybe sometime in the spring.
This coming spring.
This coming spring.
Okay.
But she hasn't given her notice yet. She can keep on working if she wants to. But their plan is to retire and then they're going to do traveling. So.
Do they, does the library do that on their own? Do a search for a new director and so forth?
Yes. Cause they're autonomous.
I'm just looking at this and being just, I don't know. It's like the library is just tone deaf to the idea of things sometimes. Um, you know, we're going through all this crap and they want $40,000 more in the middle of this when we ask for zero budget, you know?
Well, just remember the zero budget is from the selectmen to the department heads that we manage. We don't manage them. So they can do whatever they want.
No, but I'm, I understand, but I'm taking it as part of our charge too, that, that we have these issues with taxes may simply not be paid. We don't want to diminish the, the funds that we have. You know, the, the other side of every single thing that we talk about is, do we need police? Yeah, I'm sure that we need police, you know, all these things. I, it's not as though they're, they're presented without reason or cause, but the other end of it is we have to pay for it. And then I always have in the back of my mind, I live in one of the highest tax towns in the entire state, uh, at least in terms of rate, right? And you keep jacking up the rate and people who have lived here their entire lives say, well, I'm moving to Nottingham. I'm moving to Barrington. I'm moving out of here. I'm going to leave my home I've been in for 30 years. Cause I can't afford it anymore. Why would I live here when I can move down the street and cut my property tax bill in half for the year?
Well, the most of the, most of it is the school district. It's Durham, Lee and Manbury.
I was going to say, you got more good news coming. So.
Yeah. Let me share something with you guys. Um, ladies, sorry, you're not all guys. Um, we set the tax rate last night, um, and the new tax rate is going to be 3186. Uh, last year's tax rate was 3149. So it's a little bit more than 1%. The school rate went down. Yes, everybody get your defibrillator out. Yes, the school rate did went down. Went from $1.19 down to 1980. The county went from 299 to $3.12. The town went from 592 to 658. And state education tax went from $2.39 per thousand to 232. So seven cents. So, uh, that should make you feel a little, little good. Unfortunately, I think Mr. Brown just kind of let the cat out of the bag. The school went down, but next year the school's going to go up big time because of the bond for the new middle school. So look at your tax bill and be happy about it. Cause next year you're not going to be very happy. So.
Okay.
You're getting something, but
I, I don't think we can increase the, the library's budget as much. And as far as I'm concerned, they can take it out of their trustee line or they can not hire the person. But I think
I agree, Rebecca. I think like, let's cap them at 250 or something and call it a day.
Yeah.
And they'll, and they'll do what they want anyway. So.
Right. They don't want to spend, if they don't want to spend $45,000 on new books, then they can hire their person.
Okay. So I'm hearing a couple of different things.
Yeah.
Want to cap them at two, a quarter million dollars? What are you trying to do?
Yes, that's what I'm suggesting and they can do however they want.
All right.
Yeah. Cause we don't have to go line by line.
Well, I kind of need to tell them what we're recommending, but let me, let me take a stab at it and see if you guys like it. When we look, go over this again, if you don't, we can tweak it. How about that?
Okay.
Is that okay?
How, how has, how has COVID affected their ability to provide youth librarian services anyway?
They do it on Facebook.
Yeah. Do remotes.
And they have, uh, book pickups and pickup crafts that you can come and pick up.
Yep. Somebody still has to prepare all that stuff, but yes.
Most successful has been Stacy.
I don't know. My children personally have not, um, participated in it. I don't know, Rebecca, if you are cord, have, you know, participated in those activities.
Yeah, my child is not, but I've heard good things. And I will say this for the youth library. I mean, she's always getting as much free stuff as she can.
Yep.
She does, she does love to not spend money on these crackbacks.
Yeah.
But
According to Ruth, it's very popular. It gives parents something to do with the kids that's already organized for them. But in terms of the number of people going into the library, almost nobody. Um, I was in there, I, I've been in there multiple times and when I go in, there's almost nobody there. Usually there's probably like half a dozen people. But there was two people in there last time and she says pretty slow today. So but people still use their services.
Hmm. Okay.
Those are all the people, oh, excuse me, all the departments that presented. Um, I don't know if you want to do some of the ancillary things. I don't think we're going to have any problems with it. Like for instance, the long-term debt and interest on long-term debt, we should be okay with those, right?
Well, those are what they are, right?
They are what they are.
Exactly.
Uh,
I say we don't pay.
I don't care approach.
Yeah.
Possess your buildings. Um, Agriculture Commission is asking for no money. I assume you guys are okay with that. Patriotic purposes, she's asking for $250 less than last year. That's really for the bunting and flags and stuff. I assume you're good with that. No?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh.
All right.
Not going to get in the way of bunting right now. I'll choose another hill to die on when it comes to this.
Oh, no bunting?
No, I'm not going to be anti-bunting.
All right. Well, wait a minute. There's one more. I think it's, where is it? Oh, the Water Treatment Distribution Conservation Commission, the East, uh, Southeast Watershed is not asking for any money again. So we'll just keep that the way it is. Uh, animal control is from 500 down to 100. I assume you'd be okay with that.
Probably just, why, why is that reduced?
They don't use it. They don't have needs of it.
Oh, okay. So the, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the actual. The, the actual was only 54. I thought maybe they were just switching to a 22 rifle or something.
Every now and then, every now and then they capture a loose animal and have to feed it and that's about it.
That's, yeah, that's correct. Mr. Brown has it right. That's what that line item is for.
That, that is, so in the town budget, we have a line item for dog food.
You got it.
Cat food.
Okay. Yes. All right. Kibble of some sort. All right.
All right. That's it. The numbers.
And we didn't, we didn't, did, did we touch on the direct welfare assistance and why that's down a little bit? Is that a mistake?
Uh,
That's
Julie's going to present that next week.
Haven't done that one yet.
Yeah, we haven't done that one yet.
Okay.
Thing is, the person that, that we have do that, she is very good about directing people to other places that have funds. So, um, like for instance, you're taking a look in terms of, um, uh, the fiscal, it just ended in 2020. We budgeted 19.5 and she only spent $9,800. So that's not let people don't have needs. It's just that she was able to direct them to other places to fulfill their particular needs.
Yep.
Of that 98, 39, almost all of it was rental assistance. So she gets them like for, she sends them to CAT for fuel assistance. Um, and other places like that. So she allows these other programs that we've already, you know, we give money to all these things anyways. So she directs them to them to provide services for these particular people. So.
Okay.
Any update on the office move?
Uh, we just cut an extension from Mr. Daley. Mr. Daley's been very nice to us. Um, we were supposed to start October 1st and we got delayed. So he delayed it till November 1st. We just, uh, had a, I don't know if Mr. Brown signed it yet, but, uh, an agreement to extend it. So it doesn't start until December 1st.
Yeah.
We don't have to pay that 500, $5,000 a month. Um, so, but we're still working with the, the DOT in terms of getting permission.
Yeah, the road.
Yeah, with Buzzell Road and with 125. So no date yet.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll beat the first snowstorm.
No, we already had that, Mr.
We already had that one.
Yeah.
No, no, that's not a storm.
That doesn't count.
Come on, come on.
Hey, I had like an inch. Come on. Uh, anything else we want to talk about?
Everybody's good.
Everybody's good. Okay. All right. I'll update this with what we discussed and send it out, maybe tomorrow or the, maybe the next day. Uh, cause our next meeting is next Tuesday. We're talking about the selectmen's budget. Um, and then we'll get together again. What is it? December or whatever it is, and we'll go through this process again.
Are the selectmen present when we talk about the selectmen's budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the selectmen are present at this budget. So.
Well, and their budget is really like the
Really Julie's budget.
Julie, yeah.
Town hall budgets, not really their budgets, not like
Okay.
Yeah.
Much.
Yeah. Julie will talk about the selectmen's office, IT expenses, assessing legal fees, uh, personnel administration. Um, government buildings and insurance and what else? Um, general assistance and welfare. And we've kind of beat it to the punch with the long-term debt and the interest. So so that's of all the presentations, that's the biggest one in terms of time and also, um, number of particular budgets that she talks about. So.
Scott, do we know if the fire department's looking for another person this year?
Ooh, I don't know. I haven't heard, but that doesn't mean anything. Supposedly the new person is working out quite nicely. Chief's very happy. He is making some of the business people kind of irritated at him.
Yes, he is.
The, uh, we just had a, the Heritage Commission had an easement walk with the Flag Hill people, Brian Ferguson. Brian Ferguson is not very happy. Brian Ferguson is not very happy, because before, uh, the fire department really didn't have time to do all the, uh, inspections that they should have been doing on businesses. Not that they didn't do them, but they didn't get to all the businesses in a timely fashion because they had no time. So with this new person, the chief's able to have people go out in a more timely basis. Well, they went to visit Flag Hill and I guess he's got some, I, I don't know how big the violations are, but they're not very happy with his, uh, operations. And he's gonna have to do a lot of improvements. They haven't told me exactly what he has to do, but he's not happy.
Mr. Ferguson explained that he believes that his operation is completely safe. Um, I believe before he ran Flag Hill that he was some sort of a consultant to people doing distilling. So it's not as though he has just a passing familiarity or just, you know, uh, bought the still and just feeds the grain in one side. He knows how the thing works. So he insists that there's, he has a very safe way of ventilating any of the potentially explosive or flammable gases from the still. Um, and that in order to comply with what the chief says he needs, he has to spend something like two hundred thousand dollars. Which seems like, I don't understand what sort of fire suppression could possibly cost that amount of money. It seems like you could flood the entire building with inflammable foam, uh, for far less money, but, um, uh, to what extent?
Like a sprinkler system or something?
Excuse me, but really, we, we need to, this.
Yeah.
Discussion and that issue, um, is, is gonna have, it's gonna have a lot, a lot of discussion. And I really think we need to, uh, drop out of it right now.
We'll have to, yeah.
A lot of people.
Fire department.
Yeah. All right.
Anything further?
Any other questions? Motion to adjourn.
Sounds good.
Is that a second?
Yeah.
Everybody, that's all, folks.
All in favor? All right.
Good night, everybody. See you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.